Glasses in the car. I left my glasses. We'll wait till the glasses.
How you doing, Dr. Rice?
I am blessed. How about yourself today? It's Mr. Ellis on the other side. I don't know. I only saw the top of his shirt.
He's shining over there.
Yeah, I might get to see. Yes, it is. It's quite oil.
How was the day, Mr. Ellis?
It was good. Trying to wrap it up.
Yeah. Tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow.
The baby's last day. I can't believe we don't have another year.
You got your glasses?
The next session. Do we have one?
Meeting of the East Cleveland Board of Education meeting for May the twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Work session and special meeting is now called to order. But yes, let's do the pledge of allegiance and then our immediately following that will have our roll call. Be stand with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My nation and my land are indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Dr. Rice.
Present.
Mr. Smith, my wall. Mr. Robinson.
Present.
Ms. Fountain. And Ms. Sanders. I know Ms. Fountain asked to be excused. I haven't heard from Mr. Sanders. Approval of the May the twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting agenda. What's your pleasure?
My sister, my better president, I make a motion that we do the approval of the May twenty seven, twenty twenty five meeting agenda.
I second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the meeting agenda for May the twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Do anyone have any questions or comments regarding the agenda? Okay, I see we have several things here for education, but the education committee did not meet.
We have open online voting, please, for the agenda.
I asked for questions and comments, and I'm giving a question or a comment regarding that motion that was made.
Oh, the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was about the agenda.
So therefore, for the education committee did not meet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll need a lot more explanation. Mr. Smith, my walls.
Yes.
And Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, yes.
Motion approved. Let's move on to the reports of the education committee.
Madam President, I was not aware of any of these resolutions that are written here and will be discussed with me. I don't feel comfortable reading them or saying what's best.
Okay. What's your suggestion?
That they be put on the agenda for next month.
Or I can't do that. I'll put them under superintendent recommendations and they will come under me. But we can't wait another month for some reason.
Okay, so okay with you. Also, let's go ahead and use superintendent recommendation. Okay, no problem.
Question, are we doing a report on the education?
Yes, he's going to do it. Let's not read it.
Okay.
Pass those out, please. I can discuss it right now. I'm prepared to have an executive study. So the first two you see under education are where they can be put under superintendent's recommendation. But there are two to renew our media and our marketing of our district. So historically, we were with, and I have Art here because Art is in communications and he's been helping me and working with me with these negotiations. We started with, not iHeart, Urban Radio, and we were using them. Then we switched over to iHeart Radio. But now, as we looked at both companies and we reviewed both proposals, we kind of created our own proposal, pulling from each to try to maximize what we can do in this district. So as you see here, this is our marketing proposal for these two entities. And the objective is to increase our student enrollment. So the point of what we're talking about tonight in terms of marketing and media investments is so that we can actualize a two and a half percent increase in student enrollment. We know student enrollment is dropping. We saw it repeatedly over all of the reports we showed you. So this is an effort to begin to try to creep back up, try to slowly get more students. And I'm gonna talk about how it pays for itself in a moment. So it's aligned to our strategic plan, which is called now our flight plan. It is aligned to that in three different ways. Number one, it talks about the enrollment and making sure that we can stabilize this enrollment, increase enrollment. So we're going to be targeting families through these different mediums. It also supports the pre-K two curriculum and access so that the parents of the young kids can get these relatable messages and they can stay connected. And the pre-K parents can maintain their visibility. And then also in terms of equity, trust is an issue that we're constantly talking about restoring. Our brand identity, continuing to make sure that East Cleveland stands out and continue to fight against this negative public narrative that has been there for decades. We feel that going through the media route, as we've been doing before, typically spend about a hundred and fifty thousand a year historically on media. This is asking for a little bit more, fifty thousand dollars more, so that we can do more to try to attract these students to come back. If you look at the summary there, with Urban One, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. It's an eight-month project. But we're going to be talking about this broadcast radio, endorsements, closed circuit TV, the closed TV. Anytime you're watching YouTube or you're watching Roku and you see commercials, those are places where we have to intersect with our families so that we can get them to come back. Also, just retargeting, geo mapping, and then social media. iHeart Radio, we only wanted to look at two things, which is getting on the radio, having nine hundred and twenty-eight spots in seven months, and then also having these impressions, making sure our name is out there, our logo is out there. And people are being constantly reminded that we are a viable location for your child's education. And what's the return on investment? Right now, this district is spending sixteen thousand, nine hundred per student. Because we went from when I first got here, we were the lowest in terms of per student expenditure, according to the state of Ohio. Now we're at the top. And some of that goes to the furniture and some of the investments that we made. But again, if you see there, we're running sixteen-nine, simple math. If we get back ten students, that covers the Urban One portion. If we get twenty students, that's covering everything. And if we get more than twenty students, this actually becomes profitable because now we're getting more money for students than we would have because more kids are here. Give you an example. A parent hears Big Red or Cardinal on WZAK. Then they see the district on YouTube when the kid is watching a cartoon like My Child, watching Gracie's Corner or one of these other things. They click the ad, then they want to visit the school and they enroll. And with one family, that's a seventeen thousand dollar spend. So this isn't just about advertising. It's about enrollment stability. It's about equity of access of information. And it's also about allowing folks to have confidence in our district as we move forward into our next phase. So for those reasons, this has been presented tonight to talk about marketing and media when it comes to our plan, how do we make sure folks know what's going on in this district? It's a common problem. We talk about people don't know things. So this is where this proposal is coming from, is to try to increase the student enrollment through media and marketing. So I submitted that for your review and I welcome any questions and artists here with me to answer any detailed questions that I may not have specific answers.
So we will deem this program successful if we have a hundred and twenty-eight kids. Is that what you're saying?
So it's costing two hundred thousand. Yeah, so if we get, if we get actually twelve students back, it would pay for itself. If we get more than that, it starts to become profitable for us. Where we're earning, we're getting more students back than it costs us to get them. So that would be a positive. If we get more students than twelve, it would pay for us.
And for this one year we're talking about?
Just one year, eight months and seven months. Yep, just for the one year.
In order for us to show an increase, and that means for the opening of this school year?
No, during eight months, so at the end of the eight months, end of the seven months, that's where you actualize the number of students. You wouldn't get it before we start the, we haven't started. So we would need eight full months with Urban One and seven full months with iHeart Radio to determine whether or not we hit the marketing objective. Again, we typically spend fifty thousand less on this, but we're trying to turn student enrollment, which is where the increase is coming.
So therefore, you're going to begin this campaign in?
Pending board approval. We will begin and then start working through those eight months and seven months after.
Okay, so you'll begin right away. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Art, what you think?
Yes, ma'am. Pending board approval, we will start a week. If you're already set up, you're ready. Just waiting for the official okay from the head.
To move forward.
So that like the seven months will begin June, July?
So.
So you're gonna do a heavy presence this summer? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. We were to get, we made ready for, it's even, we will start June.
Pardon?
Just a few days on June, so we will start right at the beginning.
So the first month will be June, June, July, August, September, October, November, December. By January. By January, we should be able to talk about the difference this has made.
So June twenty twenty five begin, we should see a difference. January.
That's the conclusion.
Twenty twenty six.
That's the conclusion of the campaign.
Right, so we should definitely see something by then.
Yes, and this is what the companies are promoting. This is their number saying what they can do, what they can bring back.
Any other additional questions on that? I asked. Okay, yes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What marketing strategy are you using? What are you putting in the, what are you using to draw these students? What are you offering?
All right, you want to talk about some highlights out of the proposal? Come on to the mic. They want to see you.
Oh, you got a quick problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Take care of yourself, darling.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, um, you say a question, which I'm sorry.
What is the marketing strategy? What are you offering?
What are they gonna be doing?
Families, what, yeah. Where are you gonna be going?
Will we be doing a role with the company's needs on other companies?
Both. The company?
Start with, start with Urban Radio. So what is Urban Radio? What is the campaign?
So based on our need for two point five increase overall for needs enrollment, Urban One has put together a very robust campaign, taking advantage of their foothold in the urban market here, specifically catering to our underserved and privileged communities to attract students to our resources. So we would advertise these in the way of our case western reserve connection, getting them into that school, the graduation from here. Our career tech programs, our bolster security, all those really, all those really prominent features that make us attractive to outside communities. We take advantage of our social media outlets. We take advantage of the radio, which is a big, big thing, the reach on radio in your car, on your streaming device, on your television. All these things we take advantage of via our video, our audio presence. We took a bunch of kids down to the studio down there, they're recording some commercials, things like that. So our marketing strategy just basically surrounds us, highlighting a lot of the things that we have going on from a day to day. And just showing how robust our programs are. Hopefully that answered your question.
You have a follow-up question?
Yeah, one other question. Is there any like billboards, designs, radio, you know?
Well, so these are specifically media companies in the way of broadcasting and visual media. So you're thinking videos, you're thinking banner ads on websites, you're thinking commercials, things like that. We have in the past, taking advantage of other companies to put up billboards and bus ads and signs like that. That would be something that we could potentially look into as a supplement to this. But this specific thing is primarily for our broadcasting needs. So a lot of the video that you see that we produce here would be featured on, I don't know if you watch Hulu or if you watch YouTube TV or Tubi, right? So you know, those are those ads you can't get around. Instead of seeing a guy commercial, you will see us, you know, and they can't skip it. And you'll say, okay, well, oh, man, I didn't realize y'all had an automotive program that could fix my car. You know, that type of thing, or that my kid could come out and feel all these credentials and these experiences that could take them far and far beyond wherever they currently are, you know? And that makes us so attractive because that's something that a lot of people immerse themselves in daily, while they're at work, while they're in the car, while they're at home. These are things that people constantly see. And having us in the zeitgeist like that significantly increases our name value and our brand awareness. And that's something that even a small part could do a great justice to our need for that two point five percent. So billboards, yes. I mean, that's something we could absolutely supplement, I suppose.
We've done that for years.
Yeah, but this specific thing wouldn't be for that.
And we didn't see the enrollment, we didn't see a difference in enrollment due to billboards. So it was hard to say the billboards are helping. They're giving presents. And then the bus, the bus ads, the ones that are on the bus stops, we found those get vandalized more than anything else because folks see the, and they take it, they take it as a keepsake. So if they see their child in the pit, like we've seen, we've replaced that a lot. So it's not as effective when they keep taking those down. So we're trying to go in a different direction because we have to get the numbers up any way we can.
Another question. Okay, when you talk about market, exactly how wide or high extensive is the market for, you know, I, you know, with the grants, I get a chance to see a lot of Tubi and this and this and all that other stuff, you know? So I really gotta look past it, but the kids love it. How extensive is that, is the market? How wide?
Market is, well, the market in terms of reach, how far?
Like, am I going to send it to Lido or, you know, and I just throw that out?
So one of the things about me was geofencing, right? So that's essentially the radio brought, super smart, right? Think of like your cell phone and how when you exit a certain area, the service either gets better or worse or maybe not usable if you go out in the country or something like that. That's because there's a service area that it cares to based on where your plan is located.
Right.
And so similar to that, we've identified, based on that, we've identified a series of areas and including the area that both of these companies broadcast to. And so we identify a bunch of zip codes that we have, that we have.
Oh.
Current students in, students that we're looking to attract around other places strategically that we will say, okay, there are a bunch, there's a bunch of kids that live here who go to this place.
Right.
In this zip code. So we'll specifically target our radio ads to broadcast more there so that they're constantly hearing it even though they're going somewhere else. So the reach is relatively broad and it's determined by us. So we identify those spaces to them and they direct our efforts in those specific areas. And so I guess it's as broad as we're willing to buy.
We have a number of students going to like Noble Academy from what I'm hearing. So it's gonna be that broad up to?
It's absolutely in our area.
Northeast Ohio.
Yeah, it's absolutely, but it's gone, it goes as far for sure as Solon. There, definitely out into the deep west side for sure. And our, the specific zip codes, I can't call them off.
Oh, no.
But the zip codes around.
Allenwood area.
Right, and even when we were doing bus ads and things, we had ads out. There wasn't a bus ad on Fifty Fifth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah, we were, we were pretty out here. And so this enables us to do that just without that physical, having to put a bus ad up. It causes us to get that reach out. So if you're traveling through that area, and that's the cool thing too, it's not stagnant. And so if you're moving and you enter into an area, you're more likely to hear certain things. So I would just, if we invested this, I would, or I'll ask you guys just take a listen over the course of your drives, things like that, seriously, because we need to gauge the way that this is working and what the real-time experience is of the person that's hearing you. So if you guys are listening to, it'll be, if this plan goes through as it is, this will be on both the Urban One stations, which are your one oh seven nine, your ninety-three point one, everybody listens. Right, and then there's a couple more in the AM section. There, and there's a list. There's just a poppin' ones I don't know.
Oh, that would be good then for us to get the list.
Oh, yes, I, no, I have, I have.
All right.
I can absolutely forward this plan to you guys in detail. And it breaks down every place, every station, every channel, every, so we can put that to you. And then with the iHeart side of it, those go into the one oh six point ones, the Kiss FM. And that was the, that's why this combined effort was so, so interesting to us because while they're both very large and glamorous in media space, iHeart serves a certain demographic. It's very broad, it's very wide-reaching, but the people that we may attract are in those further out areas. And that serves us in the way of name value for sure. But in terms of literal, will this person investing possibly coming here? You're thinking more of the area, the urban areas. And that's where Urban One has the leg up. And so it benefits us greatly to have a stake in both spaces in order to both up our name value and our client recognition, which overall will increase our public perception, which helps everybody, all the rising tide of the salt ships. And so it was just, it seems like a very critical step for us to make sure that we touch and take advantage of all these stuff.
So Arthur, is it gonna be like a open house or a big day or is, with the stability of the enrollment, how does that work? They just gonna call a special line or number and enroll, like, are they gonna come and get the opportunity, hands-on and see exactly what programs are offered, how they work?
I'm very glad you said that. Because with this opportunity, knowing we have this resource, this enables us to, to position ourselves in these activations. So part of the reason we love iHeart, working with them, was because a lot of the things that they contributed to us was that face value. If you came to our employee recognition, the D K was from iHeart. You know, and he's on, he comes whenever we ask. It's like, and the kids love him. They always have something to give away. They really immerse themselves in spreading message for us and they're visible. And so they come, they're, it's always a good time when they show up. And so that enables us to plan things. Like I said, there's already a couple of plans already in the works pending approval, thinking the things for the first day at school for instance.
Oh, okay.
Bringing, if you guys recall a few years ago, we had the, it was like a hundred guy, a hundred men.
That was really nice.
It was very nice. So they're working on an idea very similar to that, to make the first day at school like a, you know, to really make it a fun, must-see kind of, possibly even bringing in a couple of people. And that's another thing, taking advantage of the personalities that you hear, taking advantage of those radio D fans and people that you know, that you hear that can kind of spread our message for us, that people are more apt to listen to. So yeah, that, to answer your question, that's largely contingent upon us and how creative we can get in using these resources that these companies allow us to have.
I noticed on Facebook, they have these pop-ups now, and I'm seeing culinary arts. So was it the nursing? So we, I'm not gonna say how often, because I'm not fang on it, but when I log on, I see these pop-ups and they are Shaw High School. So and we, I'm not gonna say how often, cause I'm not staying on it, but when I log on, I see these pop-ups and they are Shaw High School. So that brings a good awareness.
Yes, sir. And you can't help it. You know, it just kind of shows up in your face and you're like.
And then the one pop-up comes up constantly was our graduation. So I don't know who initiated that, but that's a good resource as well.
Any additional questions? Hearing none.
Madam President, I move that we pass this resolution.
Which one?
Why don't we do both? Well, anyway, no, let's do one at a time. Okay, uh, there, that's the resolution for Urban One?
Yes, it is.
Uh, second.
It's been properly moved and second that we uh uh passed the uh motion for Urban One. Are there any additional questions or information that you need? Hearing none. Uh, call for the vote.
I'm opening online voting. Uh, I will have to take your, yes. This one, there? Okay, um, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Edmao Walsh?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Motion.
All three, all four votes are in, motion passed. Okay, uh.
He thinks he's putting all this under superintendent.
Okay, but uh since he's, you've done uh Urban One as well as I heart uh radio, you did them both. So if you will, Mr. uh Robinson, if you give us a resolution for I heart.
Madam President, I make a motion that we, we rep uh, I make a motion for resolution, be a resolution to authorize a contract within payment to I heart radio.
I second.
It's been properly moved and second uh uh for the resolution. Are there any additional questions for I heart? Although I, I, I offer a um commendation to Art because I, even I understood what you were talking about, so that's great. You broke it down to so little bitty pieces, so we certainly appreciate that. And the votes are. You still on?
I'm still not getting it. Neither is Bernie. I will call the vote. Um, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Edmao Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Would you take on seat?
Um, you should have, the education committee, I know it got a last minute email about this. From, I believe Tom should have sent it. And this is about the phone. So back in October, the board voted to take action on this pro phone. But for some reason, we, we didn't take action. They, we approved it, but we didn't take action. I don't know how that was back in October. Diana, maybe you could show us that at some point. But since then, the price went up. You got tariffs, you got prices, so the prices have gone up seven thousand dollars. So this resolution is with Business Network Team to get rid of all the old phones that we have, the NEC phones and the servers. Uh, and get a voice over internet protocol phone, which is the industry standard now for the beginning of next school year. Um, and this will pay for itself because as soon as we get rid of AT and T, um, we're going, we, we spent a hundred thousand dollars a year on AT and T. We would be uh saving that hundred thousand dollars a year by switching to this. So spending this sixty five, six, sixty seven thousand dollars will prevent us from spending um a hundred thousand dollars a year on AT and T. And if you remember, probably five years ago, it may have been six, this board paid a lot of money in old AT and T deals. Because if you remember, they still had the old board office lines active and they were still charging us for all that. So the previous communication director came at a meeting like this and talked about, it was hundreds and hundreds, Diana, do you remember that, the AT and T deals? So it, it was hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had to resolve. Um, but this is particularly to switch over to a new phone system, will instantly see the savings and it would be ready uh at the beginning of this school. Are there any questions on that?
That's uh, okay, so what you're saying is that it was uh put before the board previously?
In October.
In October of twenty twenty four?
Correct.
And it was not acted on?
Right.
Fully?
Right.
Even after the board had approved it?
Right.
So something happened, what happened?
We can find that out. I don't know, we can look into it, but I'm not, I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, at the next board meeting, um, I would like to know what happened? Why it wasn't, why the board enacted and nothing was done?
Okay.
That's at the June board meeting.
Okay, so I, I understand that. Um, and we'll deli-, and we'll delay our savings another, another month.
We don't have to, we don't have to delay that. Those are two separate things.
You're not holding, you're not holding a vote?
I would not. Uh, you said, you, the reason that it's under superintendent, you said you need these things enacted upon. So if you need them enacted upon, you don't have, we don't have to hold it up to be able to get answers as to why it didn't go forward.
So for my clear, your, the vote is on tonight and then you're asking for follow up questions.
You got it to be answered. Okay, I got like my notes, I don't forget.
Diana, you have a question or comment?
Yes, I do. Uh, if the board is moving forward with it, I don't understand why they're not moving forward under education with the explanation. Because superintendent can't turn that on the agenda. Superintendent recommendation?
I can answer. Well, the reason is, is because we didn't meet. I know nothing about any of these resolutions um or what was discussed. He is telling us now what it's about. So I don't have a problem putting it under education with him, his explanation, because it would be done the same thing if I was in committee.
Absolutely. That's why it can stay under education?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but uh in, in June, we need to answer to that question.
We'll, we'll add answer before that. It'll come out in an email to the board.
Okay. And that was October, you said?
Yes.
And now the price has gone up several thou-, seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, price go up every year.
Sure, of course. But if it had have been enacted in October, that would be seven thousand dollars that the board would not be losing. Am I correct? I'm trying to get a good understanding.
And, and to me, that's water under the bridge when we're gonna be saving a hundred thousand dollars annually.
Yep.
So I under, I understand the, the seven thousand.
Yes.
Um, but I'm also looking at the bigger number for the fiscal stability of the district.
And that's exactly what I'm looking at as well. Uh, for the board to be able to make um to, to take care of fiduciary duties. We must be on top of things like this.
No problem.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that we accept this resolution.
Uh, second.
It's been properly moved and second that we accept the uh pro forma uh incorporation uh network team resolution. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
All votes are in.
Motion passed. Okay, the last one, D, what is this, awarding of the points?
Uh, Mr. Ellis?
Hello, sir.
Where you go, right?
Uh, I, I would like, so Mr. Ellis, you wanna talk about uh this resolution and why is it appearing today?
So, so, so this resolution uh should have been uh ready for the early management. Uh, th- these are the graduates for the class of two thousand twenty five. Try to get them to the end of time to, for the board to make the uh approval before commencement. You know, unfortunately, we're trying to make sure this, this list was really what it's supposed to be. Uh, with all the correct names and uh making sure that those students had completed all the requirements for graduation. So we missed that deadline. So that's why we have it uh on this board agenda tonight, you know, uh asking the board to approve the class of twenty twenty five that they have met all the requirements uh for, for graduation.
Retroactive.
Retroactive.
But I, I thought it was important to have Mr. Ellis come and give an explanation as to why we see it right now.
Thank you. Uh, uh, how many graduates? What, ninety four, you said?
Ninety six.
It was ninety six graduates? And the year before was like a hundred, wasn't? We were trying to uh uh make that, uh trying to get that number, uh and we couldn't.
So, so.
Quite remember.
So it was just a little over a hundred in the class of twenty twenty four. So, so we had uh actually ninety seven in this class that was sitting in front of us. There's a hundred and eleven on the cohort. Uh, so those eight students, we, we just, we tried to find where they are and to get them all. So right now, you know, but all ninety seven students uh will graduate. The, the, the one student that did not came to us late and uh he was homeschooled. Also, we had to work some things out. So that one student, this will be the first time we're gonna have one student for summer graduation.
Right.
So one student, so and that's because of him being homeschooled, we had to find those records and make it work. You know, and, and if this student was in C V A, this student still would not be graduated this year. He would automatically graduate this year. So we're just trying to get him out according to uh the records that his parents brought to us. So, 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 but we, the ninety six students that stand in front of us, once again, all walked across their stairs.
So no summer students this year?
Just one.
Just that?
And, and, and in the past, we have anywhere, no, no less than seven, six students, you know, so but, but this time only one, so.
Also, uh, if you'll take a look at the program for uh twenty twenty four and look at the number for the commencement and look at the program for, I'm sorry, my old school teacher, I just uh, uh, and look at the program for twenty twenty five, look at the commencement number. I'll just leave it like that, okay?
Okay.
And you get a vote and take a look.
That number, that number has been issued before.
Okay, just when you get a chance, take a look at it. I'll give you a call next week. Okay.
All right, and let, let's do a, a, a deep dive and make sure we on the right graduating class, cause there's discrepancies as to what number this is. The class of twenty five is what graduating class in the history of Shaw, what number? So not now, but we, we need to just get a definitive answer for that and correct everything moving forward.
Resolution?
I move that we pass this resolution.
All right, second.
It's properly moved and second that we pass the resolution regarding the number of, the awarding of the diplomas for the number of students for the twenty twenty five graduating class of Shaw High School. Um, call for the vote. Are there no additional questions? Hearing none.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes. Yes.
All votes are in. Madam President, that concludes my question.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, now we go to the report of the finance committee.
I'm Bernie Rosen, the co-chair for finance. I have one resolution that I see. And that resolution, the resolution to approve the five year forecast. Madam President, I make a motion that we, we approve of the five year forecast, resolution A.
I second.
Uh, it's been properly moved and second that we approve it, but I'm sure that Ms. Whit will need to explain it to us first. So during our question and comment time, we're asking the question for uh discussion.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, for the five year forecast, I did send the forecast to all the board members about a week ago, week and a half ago, and asked if there were any questions at all. Please send me those questions. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the board had. Um, I did receive last Thursday, excuse me, six questions from, well, let me say this first. I met with uh the chair of finance committee, uh, um, Ms. Fountain. And we re, we uh reviewed the five year forecast uh in its entirety. And um then I did send her a copy of my presentation that I was going to use for the board today. She then had six questions that she asked. I sent those responses back to you today. You probably have not seen them because you were probably on your way here. Uh, I just saw them today. So I have.
You mean, you had your staff to just put, put them together?
No, I did.
Oh, you did. Oh, so you just did it. Okay. Now I understand. Okay.
So I did see those, if you don't mind passing those down. Um, these are the six questions that she asked as chair of, of finance. I thought it would be a great idea to go through her questions so that the board would be aware of the questions that the chair of the finance committee asked. And then part of the questions that she asked are also a part of the presentation. So we won't have to do it twice, okay?
Okay.
So the first question she asked is, what is the primary source of revenue for the district? This may help us understand the forecast sensibility to the major changes coming in that revenue stream. So the district has three primary sources of income. Local taxes, which is the real estate, your property taxes and public utilities. That represents, as you can see, seventeen point three nine percent of the revenue coming in. The state share through the fair school funding program, the restricted state funding and the state share of the local taxes, that's a formula, that the state has, that represents fifty seven point two seven percent of our revenue. And all other revenues in the district, which would include tuition uh for the districts for non-resident students, our interest income, our, our, our uh Medicaid reimbursements, our indirect cost reimbursements, building rentals, those kinds of income. Those things represent twenty five point three four percent uh of our income. So in summary, eighty two point six one percent, and it's actually higher than that. But basically, because part of that twenty five percent is state revenue, but eighty two point six one percent of the income coming into the district comes from outside sources, not residents of East Cleveland. Are there any questions regarding? Or any follow up on that particular question? Second question, is there a plan to address the potential gaps or surpluses? So the state budget uh has to be signed by the governor by June thirtieth of uh tw- this year. Right now, we do not know what version of that budget, because there's three versions out there, the governor's version, the House, and then the Senate versions. We don't know. Not what I'd like to do is switch over to my um presentation just to show you. I'm gonna jump to that. I'll be jumping back and forth here, okay? So if you look at this. So if you look at this, there are three versions of the budget that are out there right now. That's the Governor's budget that you'll see in the blue. The proposed, uh, forecast, that's the House budget, which is the one that I'm showing in our forecast, which is the one in the red. And then we've got the House budget that has with the thirty percent cash balance cap. The reason why this was important, this one is very important, is because I need the board to understand what that thirty percent cash balance cap means. The rest of it was just plain language, but if you look, it says that the.
What are you, excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Whit. Uh, oh, okay.
Which page?
What page is that?
That, that is not in the forecast.
No, what I could have, okay, I didn't think so.
This is my presentation.
Gotcha.
Okay. So if you look at under the yellow that's there, the last dash says includes a thirty percent cash balance cap that reduces taxes starting in twenty twenty-six if the cash balance exceeds thirty percent of your operating expenses. I want the board to understand what that means.
Please.
This district, this district has been excellent stewards of our money. We have, we have made sure that, um, when we look at our enrollment and we look at our staffing, uh, Dr. Pedigree and I meet, we talk to the board, we talk about the reduction in force, we talk about closing schools like we had to do before. Remember, if you all will recall, for Chambers and Superior? We, this district has been good stewards of the money to keep our cash balance at a level so that we can operate. So here's what happens. When they had the reappraisals and property taxes went up in, uh, well, all over, but let's say we're talking East Cleveland, property taxes went up and residents started screaming that property taxes are too high. So one of the answers to that that came from the House was, you know what? Then maybe we need to give property owners a tax holiday. What that means is, and if you'll remember, we do this with insurance because we have that savings inside of our insurance that we can take a, a, a premium holiday so nobody has to pay taxes for that month. Well, the state is saying, because there's such an outcry from the community, maybe we will create a premium holiday for taxpayers. Okay? But the way that will happen is if our cash balance, that's our bottom line, is thirty percent more than what we spend, then we'll take a reduction in our revenue. So here's what that means for us. If the House version passes, the seventeen point three nine percent, which equals to about nine million dollars that we receive in local taxes, we will not receive. But property owners will get a holiday. So just think about what that would do to the school district's budget if nine million dollars was taken out of our budget. Nine million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine oh five. That's what, that's what would happen. So it's as if we are getting penalized for doing the right thing. And we're not the only district that would be in this situation, understand that. We're not the only district. Uh, districts right now are screaming it. And, um, when I talked with Ms. Fountain about it, she was saying, she, uh, OSBA was, uh, was sending board members information about this and saying, write to your, write to your representatives, send letters, because you do not want that version to pass. If you live in East Cleveland and you're paying those high taxes, it's kind of hard. Well, I, I, I understand that, that part I understand. So I'm not, I'm not, all I'm telling us is, if that happens, here's what, here's what happens to the school district. That's all I'm saying. Here's what happens to the district. So you could have a happy homeowner, but here's your school district that just lost nine million dollars, and we have no way, no way to recoup that money. So that's, that's, I don't, I don't even want to say it's a, it's a balancing act. That would be horrific for the district. Okay? So is there a plan, question number two? Is there a plan to address that? We have to wait till after June thirtieth to see what version of the budget passes that will take effect July one. And hopefully, it won't be, it will not be that version, that it will, hopefully, that it's going to be the House version of the budget that passes. And they find another way to give relief to property owners, but not on the backs of the school district, of a public school district. Any questions about that one? Good explanation, but it may be, it's a lie. Okay. We're here by the commit, we're here by the community. So what is the community going to say about that? But they are out here fighting about those House taxes.
The, the, the problem is, though, that you win one battle and you save the district.
Exactly. That, that is not a win-win. Yes.
And then without a school district, that, you know, property values start to go back down because you wouldn't have a school system.
The, this district, what would happen, what would happen is by twenty twenty-seven, by twenty twenty-seven, this district would be back in fiscal emergency with the state of Ohio.
I saw that.
That's where we would be, if that happened. Third question, any, anything else about question number two? Third question, will there be any suggestions for the upcoming capital spending for major repairs, new programs, and a new forecast with school closures? So for the first part of that, this board, as you can see by my comments, the board approved Scenario Five. And within Scenario Five, there were some capital improvements and projects that Dr. Pedigree explained that needed to happen within that scenario. So, uh, Dr. Pedigree then sent out a summer twenty twenty-five Scenario Five project proposal checklist so that the district starts that process. If you look at the last two pages of what I just handed you, that is what he sent to us. And the only reason that I'm giving this to the board is so that the board sees that those capital projects, all of those things are happening, uh, within the district as they should through Dr. Pedigree. He's letting everyone know what their assignments are, what the proposals are, capital projects, getting those dollars in so that we can then look at, what is that going to cost the district in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven? All of that is always a part of your five-year forecast. That's the way we meet, that's the way we collect the data. And if anything needs to come before the board, we bring those things to the board. So that's already a part of the five-year forecast. And also, I noted, uh, for the second part of our cut question, a new forecast with school closures. The five-year forecast is required by law to be approved in May and November of each year. So again, here I am in May with the forecast. If there are any changes to the forecast that would impact the financial stability of the district, the CFO Treasurer is required to advise the Board of Education and file a new forecast with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. So all of that is already in law, those are already things that we are required to do. Any questions on three? Number four. Will it be any plans for the foreseeable future to address and manage rising costs such as healthcare, pensions, not shown on the five-year forecast? Employee benefits are included in line three point zero two in the five-year forecast. So that is in the forecast already. Um, projected estimates are always included in the forecast based on the latest trends. So as I told, the board has approved, uh, One Digital. One Digital is that insurance consultant that we have, that we're always looking at what our costs are. We're always looking at the trends. We're always looking at, is our healthcare going up or down, or what our costs look like? We are in a consortium, so we have to be very aware of our spending. So all of that happens. Um, we meet with myself and the benefits coordinator, meet bi-monthly, uh, with the, uh, with a consultant, One Digital. We have an annual meeting once a year with the superintendent where they come in and they show what we spent, where that spending, uh, where the high costs, uh, claimants are, what, what all of those things are. We do that on a continuous basis. So yes, we do take care of all of that within the district. Um, and also, I do update the board annually. Open enrollment is in September. I always bring that information to the board to say, here's what has happened with our, uh, healthcare this year. Uh, we implemented, uh, helping Paul, one year or two, the insurance committee. We, that, so the insurance committee now, and I believe the board receives the monthly, um, newsletter. Thank you, from the insurance, from the committee, you guys are on the, you're on the mailing list to receive that monthly, uh, newsletter.
I've not received one. I can't, I can't remember seeing any other than that one.
Well, we will, I will check that.
I've seen one.
I will check that because your name, once your name gets on the list, I don't know why it gets off, it goes up. So I will check that because we want to make sure that all the board members also receive the monthly newsletter that is for the employees only. That's what that insurance coverage is for, employees. Um, also, I'm letting, uh, she, um, letting her know also, this is also a part of the E C E A and O T contracts. So we just can't make decisions about healthcare. We have to do that in conjunction with our certified and classified unions.
And in every negotiation, this comes up and we are advocating for the board's position. Uh, and we try our best to get a better position than we had last contract.
Yes. Now, she also asked about the pensions. Uh, the public school district is a part of the state of Ohio pension plans. School employees' retirement system is for classified S E R S and S T R S is for our certified staff. Any increases in our pension will be based on the pension board voting and the Governor approving any increases in the pension. That is not anything that this board or the school district has any jurisdiction over. Uh, if something like that should occur, all we can do is incorporate, uh, the increase in those costs into our, into our forecast. And that did happen maybe about three years ago where S T R S, uh, went up to fourteen percent on both sides. And then S E R S was ten percent, stayed at ten percent for employees, but went up to fourteen percent on the employer's share. So all of that was brought to the board when those things occurred. I want to ask you one question. I get a pension, but I also get this other statement that I guess I don't understand because I'm on the board. What is that? So the statements that are received by board members. If you look at your, uh, receipt, your deposit slip, you will see S E R S. I do. Because all board members, because you are a public, uh, within a public school district, you will either go into S E R S or S T R S, and it was decided by them that all board members would go into S E R S, meaning ten percent of the money is coming out of your payment. Right. And that is money that, once you are no longer on the board, that you can receive back. Okay, thank you. Okay? So it's like going into a, a retirement fund for you. It's like, that's what that is.
With no energy.
You might get a little bit of energy. A little bit. Okay, any questions about number four? Question five, how does the forecast align with the district's long-term goals and priority? And as I stated here, the forecast is a projection of the expenditures, um, for the current year plus the next four years. So it's a five-year forecast. Scenario Five is the perfect example of what gets incorporated into your five-year forecast. We, I include all of these expenditures. So if on, uh, well, on, and I can't remember, Dr. Pedigree had, when he was going through the Scenario Five, there was a number about one point five million that had to happen in some renovations or H V A or something. That one point five million is already included in the forecast. It's there already because he has already stated as we walk through, I know I'm going to need at least that much to start those renovating projects. And then if you look at the last two sheets that I, I just referred to, you'll see he's calling for those proposals and those things and letting us know how to walk through that so that we can tally up those dollars and make sure that within that forecast, we have included enough funds under capital, superior, uh, supplies and materials. So, and as I stated, the district administration meets regarding the short-term and long-term goals of the district, any of these financial changes would be reflected in the five-year forecast. Any questions about number five? Her final question, how can the board and the community engage with this information and provide feedback? My response was, this requires a discussion on how the board would like to engage the community regarding the five-year forecast. So for me, that is a board discussion on how that twenty-three-page document that I sent to you, if in fact the board wants to engage the community with that and talk about the revenue and expenditures of the district, certainly we can, um, uh, the board can arrange a community meeting. And, and if you'll think about it, we initially had started to do that uh, when we started first having those quarterly meetings with the community. But, but because of our plan and academics was the, uh, uh, was the, what we were focusing, that was the focus. We said we were going to wait on that financial piece and let's focus totally on academics, bringing the community in, hearing what they had to say, showing them our data, all of that. So at any time, at this point, if the board wants to engage the community, um, just let us know and, um, and how that engagement needs to look. Um, we do have, uh, in January, it's a board, will we, will we call, we have a budget meeting with the community. We post it, we post the ad in the Cleveland Plain Dealer, I'll get that right. We post that ad, we also put. We post that ad, we also put it on our district website. And that happens during the organizational meeting time. If you'll remember, that's one of the things that's there. And once I review all of that with the community, with the board present, then that information is submitted to the budget commission. So, number six would be for the board. If the board chooses to do that, certainly that's a discussion with the board, Dr. Pedigree and myself. Any questions about that one? So, just quickly, I won't belabor the presentation because we, because we've gone through the questions that she had. If we just look at the projected general fund revenue for this current year.
Okay, hold on, this sat dormant for a minute, so now.
Okay.
I'll just bring it back up.
And if you, if you have the five-year forecast with you, that's that last page of the forecast that shows the three years before and then the five years. This is the numbers that you will see. The projected general fund revenue is fifty-two million, seven ninety-four, eight twelve. Our projected expenditures at this time on the forecast is forty-five million, nine sixty-five, seven seven five. So, we're looking at a gain this year of six million, eight twenty-nine, zero three seven.
What page?
The five-year for, the five-year forecast, if you go to the last page of the, of the actual forecast, the twenty-three pages.
Okay, but you're gonna discuss some of those other pages, right?
I will discuss any other page that you would like me to discuss.
All right, I'll go to the last page and I'll come back to it.
So, I have that forecast right here. And this is the page to the board that I am referring to. It was the last page of the forecast. Okay? That's on page twenty-two, I'm sorry. It's twenty-two. So, for the current fiscal year, our total revenue, if you're looking at the forecast, it's on line two point zero eight zero. If you're looking at the actual forecast, fifty-two, seven ninety-four, eight twelve. The projected expenditures for this year, forty-five million, nine sixty-five, seven seven five. That's on line five point zero five. Showing us with a gain this year of six million, eight twenty-nine, zero three seven.
How did that, how did we get a gain this year?
Well, the, we have been very good with spending our money. We watch, we, it's not that, because if you look at the forecast, it is not that we have received any big amount of money, more money from the state. We have been watching our expenditures. We, and when we close some buildings, we did, year after year, you, you do receive benefit from that because you don't have that expenditure. So, that money just continues to follow you year after year if you don't spend it. So, right now, if you'll look at, if you go back to fiscal year twenty twenty-four, if you go back there and look at our total expenditures, on line five point zero five, it was fifty-one, two twenty-nine, five eighty-six. This year, be, because of some of the expenditures that we did not have this year, that we had last year, the expenditures have gone down. So, now we're down to the forty-five, nine sixty-five. Now, what's gonna happen in fiscal year twenty-six? You may see some movement with that number because of scenario five. Because if you look at, if you look under purchase services, you see a slight increase on line three point zero three from eleven million, eight twenty-nine, seven seven three to eleven million, nine nine three, four eight three. That includes the one point five million for scenario five and some things that didn't have to happen again that absorbed the rest of that money so that it did cost us the total one point five. So, if you, you can follow that, that line of, of thinking all the way through fiscal year twenty-nine. So, if we, again, this is our current fiscal year. I already talked to you about where that revenue projection was coming from. That was the first question that was on the, on here. So, that's all, this is representing that same thing. And then, on the next slide, it's the expenditures, breaking down our expenditures, showing our salaries and benefits for this year. Salaries at nineteen million, one zero eight, one seven four and benefits at seven million, four seventy-two, four forty-two. Now, within each of the forecast, what I do put in is an estimate for salaries at two percent increase for salaries. In benefits, you may see a little bit more because of healthcare because we're always cautious about the healthcare costs. If our costs are too, too, because of the high cost claimants, if it's too high, then we may see an increase in our healthcare costs. And a lot of that is because we have a cap in OCSI. Because there's a cap on the amount that OCSI will pay, the district then has to pay a little more for the classified staff. So, all of that is taken into consideration when you're looking at a two percent increase, I just do a two percent across the board. Does not mean that's where we end up, but I put that conservative two percent in there as an increase. And then, we put conservatively about ten percent in there for benefits. Now, supplies and materials, a lot of that is what's happening with the scenario five. What is it that we, are there any new things happening in the negotiated agreement? Those kinds of things. If there's an increase, let's say the increase is three percent, then I'd have to add another percent into the, into the, the forecast. Will that, one percent would not make us have to file a new forecast? Because you're not gonna come in and zero. Because you don't know your actual. But one percent would not make me have to adjust the forecast. That nine million we're talking about, we would have to, we would truly have to adjust the forecast. And we'd have to do more than that. We would, we would be looking at immediate, immediate reductions if that nine million were to go. Okay, so, that's what the, those are the expenditures and where we're expecting those expenditures for this year. And this is just looking at that same thing, just in a, in a different view. So, if you'll look at the three-year financial outlook, this is if.
That's page?
This is on my worksheet, here.
Do they have the worksheet?
No, this is my presentation. They do not have, they do not have my presentation. And the one reason why I did, and I did talk with Shereen about it, I didn't want anyone gathering assumptions about what they see. And I needed to explain exactly what it actually is so that if there were any questions, that I would be here to be able to respond to any questions that you have.
Thank you.
So. By fiscal year twenty-seven, this is, this is saying that the house version, remember I showed you the red line version? That the house version passes. The district is expected to trend towards a cash balance of twenty-three million. Six ninety-seven, seven eighty-two. Now. If the house version passes, let me say this to the board, because of scenario five and because of some of the things that are happening there, this number will get better. So, remember that, remember some, we're closing. There's gonna be some downsizing. So, that number could get better for us. But if the wrong version gets approved in June, to be honest, it will make no difference because we, we will be, it will be critical for this district. It will be critical.
Say if the wrong.
Here, see this version?
The budget bill.
So, here's the three, here's the three budget bill. So, the one that I was looking at is, and what I presented to the board, is this one, the red, the red version here, which is the house budget. That's the one that I'm hoping will pass.
It's the most concerned.
Yes, that's the one I'm hoping will pass. But if that, um, if that budget bill in the yellow, with the thirty percent cash balance cap, if that passes, that's the one that takes the money from this district. Not only this district, but there will be a lot of districts who will be looking at financial distress if that version passes. Okay? So. Just going back, this is just looking at fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-nine, looking at that house version without the cap. That that's the position that we would be in. And then, it's saying that we're projecting here by twenty twenty-nine, our cash balance right now is trending towards ten million. But even with that, I'm saying because of scenario five and the things that we're doing, I know that cash balance will look better. So, all, but what we're showing you today is what it looks like today. And as that scenario changes, the, the, the forecast changes. It's a moving, this, the forecast, as I've said to this board, is a moving target. I can leave out tomorrow and something can happen that the state's saying, okay, we're gonna stop funding special education and immediately your forecast changes. So, yeah, it's, it's just, it's a moving target. So. We talked about that. So, right now, if we look at it, right now, these, I think that it's like a, the, every district should have at least ninety days of cash on hand. And what we're looking at here is the number of days of cash on hand that we have as a result of our cash balance. So, we're, we're in, in really good shape here right now. We're doing well. We talked about enrollment, this is not new information. We, that's why scenario five has been implemented by this board because we see this trend and what's happening with our enrollment. It is our hope that with what the board just passed this evening, that we can turn that around. Because if that gets turned around, again, it will impact the five-year forecast and will, and will help to increase our cash balance. That's just demographic, that's just demographic information again. And now, I'm down to the, the, the final. I am very concerned about the house budget.
Yeah, me too.
Because it could be disastrous for us.
And it has support.
A lot of it.
That's, that's why I'm very concerned about it.
And all the urban's are, all the urban districts are.
Yes, because every urban will be impacted by this, every single one. So, know that, again, we have been good stories of the dollars that we have been entrusted with. We bring to this board, whenever we see anything that might be a concern, we bring it to this board, we do let you know. If ever I have to change the five-year forecast because of something like this, I certainly would have to bring it before the board so the board can see exactly what's going on. The five-year forecast that we have in front of us is our projections for today. This is the way we look today. And I have to file this with the Ohio Department of Education and workforce before May thirty-first, which means tomorrow. That I have to file it. So, what I'm asking, first of all, if the board has any other questions. And secondly, to approve the five-year forecast so that it can be filed with the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. Thank you.
Okay, I, I was looking at page, and, and certainly, the comprehensive page showed the same thing, or really. But when you look at the five-year forecast, we see that.
What page, please?
That's page three.
Three?
Yep, all the way to page, back to page three. Which is all, it's all inclusive on the last page, but I can see page three a lot better. And that's what I, I, I looked at. For, for twenty, beginning in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, is that because of the house?
No, when you look, when you look at us spending more money, it is because our expenditures are exceeding the revenue coming in. It can't help but do that. And that's been one of the, I'm gonna say this, this has been your pet peeve.
I always, I always ask the same question.
But, let us think about this. Salaries go up, healthcare go up, utilities go up. When you don't have any other revenue coming in, all that you can do is start peeling away at the money that you have in reserve. Because those are things that we can do nothing about. We can't control utility costs, we can't control if healthcare goes up. You negotiate with the unions, those are additional costs.
You have to attract and retain teachers.
Yes. Yeah, it's a cost, it is a cost. So, what you're seeing there is just the bottom part, like you said, of the total forecast. That's all that is, is the bottom part of the forecast. That same ten million that I talked about, that we're looking at in fiscal year twenty-nine. But again, those numbers will change because of scenario five as we close buildings and, and as we see reduction in staff, those numbers will change. We're not paying enough, if, if we're not paying the same amount of people, we're retaining the funds in our account. So, it has no choice but to.
I, yeah, it's just that ever since I've been in this district, it's deficit spending, deficit.
Well, that's because this district has no way to increase its, its spending. Because we have, now it's been about forty years that this district has not passed a levy. Where in other districts, they're passing levies for operating costs because operating costs go up, communities will pass a levy to, to, to balance that so that they don't have the deficit spend. That does not happen in this community.
And Diane, and to your credit, when we see deficit spending on a five-year forecast, because I've been through a few of these with you now, then we go to work and we start pushing against that deficit spending year. So, it'll always say, next year we're gonna be deficit spending. And then, when that year comes around, we're not deficit spending because we made the right financial decisions like scenario five to prevent us from falling into that slippery slope because it's always in front of us. because it's always in front of us. So we're always trying to push it out further.
And that's exactly, that is correct. For the eight years that I have been here, the seven with you, that is exactly what we have been doing.
I just have to always bring it up, believe me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Believe me.
It's a very important conversation.
You better believe it.
We are very, we are very watchful.
Deficit spending, and, and when you look at that last year, yeah, I always feel like my hair is on fire. Page, I think I was looking at page six. And when you talk about tax valuation, one hundred percent rate, you kind of mentioned that. Uh, you, we talked about it in January, the, uh, collection tax rate and the, et cetera. But I thought it would be a good idea to, uh, uh, revisit that information. Because it's a lot of fluctuation there, especially.
Well, there, there really is, it, it really isn't any fluctuation. What you're looking at is, like it says, year-over-year dollar and percentage change. So, our tax, the ta, the full loaded rate is eighty-eight point three eight percent, okay? Then it says our gross collection rate, including delinquencies, is a hundred percent. Now, let me say this, I have said this to this board before, every time we talk about the five-year forecast. Consultants and districts are amazed that our collection rate is one hundred percent. Because that's just not heard of. But, I don't know what they're doing down there at the budget commission, but they are collecting those delinquent taxes and with the actual tax rate that, the taxes that they're actually collecting, and you add in the delinquent, the back taxes you added with that, they're collecting at a hundred percent. One year was a hundred and nine percent, since I've been here. But they, they're, they're doing a wonderful job with those delinquent taxes to keep our rate up, which is good for the district.
I was looking at something, uh, the tuition transfer payments on page eight.
Page eight? You were looking at what, please?
Tuition, I just wrote a, read, no, tuition transfer payments on page eight.
Page eight is the district enrollment. At the bottom it says district enrollment, at the top it says unrestricted grants and aid. So this is just the state funding.
And for some reason I put note, fair funding support.
Well, that's the, the, uh, the funding, the funding plan that's still in effect. The fair school funding plan, that's still, that, that is still in effect. They haven't, um,
Whatever I want to know, I have. It, it's cold now. It's cold, okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. And with that, I would ask for the board's approval of the five-year forecast.
Finance committee?
You made the motion already.
And this was, right?
Yes, yes, I'll disagree on some of those.
Are there any additional questions? Any additional questions? Here ain't no additional questions.
Mr. DeMao Walsh?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Yours was the only vote that came up.
I think we're still on this page, we gotta go back.
Oh, probably.
Okay. All right, let's get back to the agenda. Mr. Robinson, does that conclude finance?
Madam President, that does conclude finance.
Executive session? Next meeting?
Our next meeting, I have,
June ninth, I think.
June ninth, it's not on there, but it's June ninth.
Oh, thank you, it's not on here. Okay, June ninth, five o'clock. Uh, I did send the board, uh, the information from Mr. Farnsworth, and I did not receive, unless I missed it, a response back.
I didn't know you wanted one, I just thought you were sending us information.
Is that in response to the email that I sent you?
Please advise what you want to do. And, um, I did say at the bottom, please advise what you want to do. And I sent it to Dr. Rice, and I CC'd the rest of the board. And, uh, uh, Ms. Fountain responded back, June thirtieth works for me. But there has to be, as I stated in the email,
Our work, work session is June the twenty-third, really.
That work session, you changed to June thirtieth because of the end of the year transfers and advances? You changed that to June thirtieth, however, however, for Mr. Farnsworth, as we stated, as I stated in the email, uh, the, the board has to do the summative evaluation with Mr. Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth then has to get that information back to you, and the board then has to vote on that prior to June thirty, because June thirty is the end of that contract year and everything should be paid out prior to that time, uh, voted on prior to that date. And as I stated here, Mr. Farnsworth said he was available on June twenty-third and could get that back to you guys for your meeting for June thirtieth. But the board would have to say, yes, we wanna meet June twenty-third and June thirtieth to accommodate. That's why I sent it that way, just enlisted what needed to happen.
To the best of the truth, June.
Pardon me?
Oh, June, June, okay.
Two dates in June.
That works for me.
So it would be, the board would be meeting June twenty-third and June thirtieth. Doctor, um, uh, that contract right now ends June thirty. So, that should be for reimbursement, everything should be paid out by June thirty for the state contract. And I'm trying to say without saying, because we're not in the executive session.
On June twenty-third, what time would that be? Five? I should be back by then. So the twenty-third would be good, and the thirtieth?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Same year.
And you still have June ninth?
Oh, I see, yeah.
Is June ninth is still there too? Just for clarification.
Yeah, yeah, there are no meetings, still June ninth. I think normally in June, as the rest of the board knows, you have three or four meetings in June because of our end of fiscal year activities. So right now, you're at June ninth, June twenty-third, and June third. Okay? Okay? And the only other thing I have are documents for Dr. Rice's signature. That's all I have. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
But as far as agenda, there's, I have nothing else on the agenda.
Okay, we got our next meeting dates. And, uh, anything else good for the order? You know, I always ask every board member, Mr. Robinson, any comments, questions, thoughts? Uh, Mr. DeMao Walsh?
Little, thanks for asking.
Mrs. Sanders?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I don't have any additional kind of questions, so, uh, call for?
Madam President, I'll make a motion that this meeting be adjourned?
I second.
A motion has been made to adjourn the meeting, it's a proper second. Are there any questions about people, about adjournment? I don't hear any. Okay, we will adj, uh, adjourn.
The, uh, online voting is open.
Nothing's coming up?
Came up for me.
Mr. DeMao Walsh?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
All adjourned?
All she passes? Have a blessed evening, one and all.
Right, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Art.
You did a great job with the explanations, we do appreciate that.
Shaw great. Mr. DeRice, still waiting for him to respond about that question, the ABC question.
Yes.